...will come around with the microphone. This is not really so that people in this room can hear, but it's for the people out in the live streaming world to hear. So, hold it right here as you ask your question. Wait about three seconds so that Juniper can get you famous for fifteen seconds. And that's all I have to say.
Great, well, thank you all for coming out tonight. We'll be discussing legalized marijuana, primarily recreation or retail sales, but we're hoping to have this be just a bigger, broader conversation. I will probably start out by just asking some general questions after we introduce our guests, just to kind of whet the appetite, and then I'll turn it over for questions to the audience, and we're happy to answer any questions that we have. So, to my right is Mr. Paul McCarrier, and I'll let him explain what it is that he does.
So, I'm the president of Legalized Maine. Legalized Maine is the local organization that authored the initiative and helped pass it back in two thousand and sixteen.
And to Mr. McCarrier's right is Representative Kent Ackley. He represents Monmouth in the House, and he is on the Marijuana Implementation Committee. And maybe Kent, if you just want to...
Sure. So, the Marijuana Implementation Committee is a group of, I think it's seventeen senators and representatives who are taking a very careful look at what the citizens passed last November, and doing a lot of talking and listening with the community to try and figure out what we can do to certainly respect the wishes of the majority of Maine's voters, but also see that if there are some small changes that need to be made to make that law workable, that we do that in a wise way. That's our mission.
And to Kent's right is Phil Saucier. He is our town attorney. Did I pronounce your last name correct?
Yeah.
Perfect. He works for the Law Offices of Bernstein Shore, and take it away.
Yeah, sure. So, I, along with my colleagues, are your town attorney, and we represent around fifty towns as general counsel, so we've been able to see a wide gamut of responses and thoughts about the law throughout the various communities we represent. And we also have obviously helped on when the medical marijuana program came in, what communities could or could not regulate, and now the retail marijuana. And so, I'm here to answer any questions from the municipal regulatory area, what you can and cannot do under the law, your options and that sort of thing.
And I think that we'll probably continue in this order, just for the first round anyway. We'll start with Paul, because Paul was there kind of from inception of the citizens referendum through passage and has continued following it in the legislature. So, we'll talk with Paul a little bit, let him talk about, just generally speaking, what that process looked like, then we'll probably move on to Kent to better describe the process that the committee's going through, and then maybe we'll conclude with Phil to talk about what he's seeing other communities doing. And then we'll probably just open it up for questions. So, Paul, if you want to just give a quick overview of what you and your group did, potentially some of the ancillary groups that you partnered with, maybe some of the election results to remind people how it went statewide. I know there was a recount, but only a portion, and then, you know, kind of how you, your perspective of how it's been progressing through the legislature.
So, we, as Legalized Maine, decided to write a legalization initiative because there was a group out of Washington, DC that was going to do the same thing. We eventually managed to convince them to work with us and work with our language, which is in law today. And that language, for the purpose of this meeting, it really enshrined local control. Our philosophy is that municipalities know what's best for them, better than what Augusta can dictate. That's from, Ben, my experience of growing up in Belfast. I've been here for twenty-two years now, and I've lived in Belfast, Rockland, Portland, Washington, and Stockton Springs. So, it's been an interesting, you know, feel for different parts of the state of Maine, you know, mostly along the coast. But this sheet, I hope this helps everyone. It talks, and this was put together by the legislative analyst for the...
Yours is the copied one, it's not green.
For the Marijuana Implementation Committee, and it specifically talks about local control. And so, I'm sure some of you are familiar that other states have also legalized cannabis before us, and so it gives us brief synopsis of what those other states do, and then a brief synopsis of what's Maine's Marijuana Legalization Act, the MLA, does. We, with the idea of local control, we hope that towns will take a, you know, have an open mind to this. I know that there's a lot of apprehension about cannabis and that it's still very new, and it's also tends to be a generational issue, where there are some people who have a lot of concerns about where it will be, how it will be presented, the impressions upon our youth, and other issues like that. And again, that's why we wanted to put it to local control, so that the people who live in the town, who will be most affected by where these facilities are or are not placed, will be able to have the most control over that. So, basically, you know, the idea is that within the current law, the municipality can adopt ordinances or zoning to govern the number of retail stores, or any of the other five licenses, which are cultivation, like product manufacturing, that's like making like brownies, retail stores, where it's an example of where you'd go and purchase it, social clubs, which is the equivalent of like a tasting room, or could be like equivalent of a place where people can congregate and use cannabis together, and then testing labs. And testing labs are kind of their own standalone license. But, we, you know, we have a local licensing requirement currently, before you can get state-approved for a license. The municipalities are allowed to prohibit any type of cannabis facilities if they choose. From what I've been seeing out in Colorado, Colorado's had legal cannabis for about three and a half years now, since their program actually went online, and you're seeing a lot of towns that had previously prohibited any sort of cannabis facilities now opening up to them, because it's been, they see that the sky hasn't fallen, and they see that there has been quite a bit of economic prosperity that comes along with these facilities. They're, they also, in Colorado, do have the idea of a local option sales tax, that's something that is not in the current law, but is something that we support as a way so municipalities can start, can get some of the tax revenue directly from the sales of cannabis in their town. But the Marijuana Legalization Act does give fifty percent of the licensing fee to the town, and towns are also allowed to have their own licensing fee and standards. So, that's kind of just what it is in a nutshell, and I'll be happy to answer questions later.
And so, the way that this, this law progressed is the first place that it stopped off at was at my committee, which is Veterans and Legal Affairs. That's because that committee oversees Bablo, which is the Bureau of Alcoholic Beverages and Lottery Operations. Bablo was named in that...
The, 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 there's currently a, there's currently a bill that's going to be coming back to the House of Representatives soon, I hope, that will change the licensing authority from the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Administrative and Financial Services, which is the overseeing agency for Bablo, the liquor and lottery operations. The initiative that was voted on and approved by voters did have the Department of Agriculture as being the regulatory agency, because the Department of Agriculture has a lot more experience in the idea of like packaging and food safety, about what is safe fertilizers, things along that lines. For example, a brewer is, if someone has a brewery, the brewery is inspected by the Department of Agriculture, but any sort of sales is regulated by Bablo. But that is currently, you know, going to...
So, actually, I have the latest news, because it passed the House today.
Did you guys do, did you guys do enactment?
I can't tell you. I think it's going to the Senate first.
Well, it was at the Senate today.
So, then it was in both today. So, then it's got to come back to the House for enactment.
Right.
You're correct. You know, the, the reality of our committee putting that bill together was that the feeling that Bablo is the arm of the state that has the expertise for managing highly regulated products. Like alcohol, you want to make sure marijuana does not get into the hands of the folks where it does not belong. And so, Bablo is, is the organization in the state that does that extremely effectively. Of course, there's always room for improvement, but they've got the experience in doing that with regard to alcohol, and, and so, it was the consensus of the, of the committee, and the House of Representatives, and the Senate so far, that, that that's where that regulation belonged. There's also a section in that bill that allows Bablo to delegate responsibility for overseeing cultivation to agriculture. The Department of Agriculture's got a lot more experience in terms of looking at the, the, you know, important parts of cultivating plants, like pesticide use, like control of, of other types of contaminants, and, and that's certainly their expertise, and they'll get some piece of the regulatory pie there.
So, the progression was that the bill, the citizens referendum passed. It came to my committee. We did a very high level, tried to keep it at thirty, thirty thousand feet. Let's not get, you know, down into the weeds of all these things. We started to really quickly realize that this touched a lot of different aspects of, I mean, everything from workers, to kids, to law enforcement, retail sales. I mean, it really touched a broad spectrum of things. So, what we tried to do was fix any sort of glaring issues that we saw, passed that bill, LD eighty-eight, out of our committee, and then stood up the Marijuana Implementation Committee, where they were tasked with going a lot deeper into this. Just a brief example was some confusing language about children under eighteen being able to purchase marijuana. We fixed things like that. We were clearly able to see that this was going to touch a lot of different areas, and that's what Kent's committee has been working diligently at. So, maybe you could just gloss over the makeup of the committee. I know you said there were senators and representatives. It's kind of a bipartisan committee?
Yeah. Our official name is the Joint Committee on the Marijuana Legalization Implementation.
Aptly named.
And we're, we number seventeen, seventeen members of senators and representatives, and we're looking at the entire referendum question, and sort of, we do, from A to Z in terms of all the different concerns around the legalization process. So, things like public safety, safe driving habits, things like, things like consumer protection and packaging, those are certainly concerns that we've covered. Employer employee relations. Just last week, we had a session on local control, and we talked with the Maine Municipal Association about some of the things that they felt need to be clarified in the law. We have yet to discuss taxes and what those, the taxation levels should be, and what those revenues are going to be used for, and, and we've also talked about, on our list of things to talk about is risk mitigation. So, things like how to educate youth while they're in school about the hazards of using marijuana or other illicit products. It's been our goal to, to realize the reality of what we face in Maine, and that is, we have an illicit market, a gray market, that has been around for fifty to seventy-five years, and, and it's a pretty substantial market. It's going to be our goal to, through a series of carrots and sticks, to convince those that are participating in the illicit market, that it's just going to be easier to do business in the light of day, under some regulation supervision and, and safety of the marketplace that we set up.
So, and then maybe, Phil, you can touch on what some municipalities have already done to prohibit or lay the groundwork for allowing, or what some of the municipalities are struggling with that haven't kind of, you know, like, like ours, where we didn't necessarily take steps one way or the other, kind of waiting, feeling what the legislature's trying to do, hold on to a prohibition or, I can't remember the term.
Moratorium.
Moratorium, thank you very much. Because the legislature built into the bill was nine months of rulemaking, the legislature extended that out an additional three months, so they have an entire year. So, putting a moratorium on something that we're legally not allowed to sell yet seemed a step redundant, almost. So, we're holding on to that moratorium if we need to, but if you can touch on some, what are the other municipalities and communities are doing?
Yeah, and I thought before I did that, just to lay out specifically what municipalities can do under the law, I think it's really helpful to understand that. And, and from, as a municipal lawyer, this bill is a good bill in terms of what our authority as municipalities is. The medical marijuana law is a lot more gray, and people are still struggling around that. This was very clear, just in terms of what a municipality can or cannot do, and, and in general, it gives municipalities a lot of authority. So, the options municipalities have under this law are, you can regulate the number of stores in town, in other words, you can have a cap or a hard limit on those stores. You can regulate the location and operation of, I'm not going to say stores, but retail marijuana establishments and social clubs. You can prohibit them, you can have an outright ban on them in your town. And you can also have, in addition to those sort of zoning-type requirements, you can also have a separate license requirement that you'd have to go through, like a business license that some communities have. Those are the areas you can regulate. In addition to that, you can have other kind of undefined areas called, other sort of regulations, in general, it says in the law, that can be more strict than this law. And finally, there's an ultimate authority, which is the state license, still needs local approval. So, the law specifically says, any kind of, any person who wants to operate one of these facilities has to have a, have a state license, that then must be approved by the municipality. That's one thing that I don't know what that looks like or means, and we're hoping that that will come out of the rulemaking process, or maybe the legislative process. It just says approved by the municipality, so assume that would go before the Board of Selectmen, a liquor license type of idea, but it, it's not further defined. So, the state process will come here in some way, under the, the way the statute's written. And, and finally, my one other sort of comment about that, before I talk about what other communities are doing, is that even though municipalities may regulate the location and operation of retail marijuana establishments in their towns, which I think of as zoning-type ordinances, in other words, you can decide you want it in A-zone, but not B-zone, you can talk about the regulations around performance standards, what you'd think of as performance standards in a site plan ordinance or a zoning ordinance. The one challenge for that, and it doesn't affect Rockport, is that it specifically refers to the zoning provisions in state law, so pursuant to the zoning provisions, which require a comprehensive plan and a zoning ordinance. So, I've already seen some communities, that we, smaller communities often, or communities without a zoning ordinance, that have no option to do that. So, they, their only option is to prohibit. If they wanted to kind of somehow limit them or put them in one, they were going to be okay potentially if it was in one part of town, but because they don't have a zoning ordinance and a comprehensive plan, they weren't able to adopt those types of regulations. That does not affect Rockport, because you do have a zoning ordinance and you can regulate in that way. So, we've seen the wide gamut in our, in the communities we represent, which is, I've had one of the towns that I represent have a moratorium before the law even was voted on. In one, two cases I know of in Maine, that that happened. Other communities have had moratorium after the law went into effect, and I'll talk about moratorium in a second, because I actually agree with what you, you talk about that. And then other communities have done nothing so far and waited for the state to come up with their regulations. And thirdly, I've had some communities that have started the process at least of thinking about what kind of regulations they want to do. They haven't talked yet about prohibiting or banning or, or limiting, they just, I think they probably assumed they're going to allow it, but they're going to want to have some kind of regulation in place to, to sort of regulate the industry, perhaps some zoning ordinance. So, I've seen the wide gamut. In terms of a moratorium, whether it's necessary or not, and, you know, communities do adopt them for various reasons, or it could be a very strong opinion in town that they'd want to adopt it. I actually have the, of the opinion that it's not necessary, because it's already prohibited, right? So, the state law says you cannot have a retail marijuana establishment in any community without a state license first, and the state licenses won't be issued until at least next year. So, you know, sort of my position is, I'm, I'm happy to help communities, I've drafted moratorium, that's what they want to do, they can do that. It is sort of a belt-and-suspender's approach, but, but retail marijuana establishments are currently not allowed to operate in the town of Rockport, until the state licenses are issued, and at that point, they will be. So, we've actually, and I've shared this with Rick, we've actually shared a notice that we've given to certain communities that have not done a moratorium, just to let, let people know, because what those, what I'm seeing in certain planning offices and code enforcement offices, that some people are curious, and they're, they're interested in potentially becoming, establishing a business at some point, and they're starting to ask some questions. How do I do that? Is there a license I can get, a local license, a business license, that sort of thing, a building permit? And so, we've advised our communities to not process any of those kinds of applications, because it's a prohibited use today. It would be, it's a prohibited use until the state, they have a state license in hand. And it's just a way, just to let people know, they're, you know, because they're not going to have any kind of grandfather status, because they're not going to be able to legally operate. But it's just a way to let them know that, so there's no expectation that that's what they can do, and most communities already have that, that sort of policy in place. So, so that's what I've, I've seen, I've seen the whole gamut. And I have, there have been a couple of communities that have already actually outright prohibited it. They've taken that step. One community was a community that did not have a zoning ordinance, and, and they just prohibited it. I've had some communities that are thinking about going that direction. So, I've got the wide variety of communities and wide varieties of opinions. It's just kind of interesting to be able to represent multiple communities, just to see the variety of opinions out there, from community to community.
Great, and I'll ask a quick question, and this will, for the time being, be my last question. And it will be Rockport-specific, though I know, I mean, I at least see hope in Lincolnville out there. I know that we've, we kind of advertised this around, but I'm going to ask a question. We in Rockport are going to be putting kind of a straw poll vote on our June ballot to try to get a feel for where the citizenry is at. It's non-binding. Is that something that a lot of communities are trying to do? Because our vote was quite close. We, memory serves correct, we did pass it, but we barely passed it. And so, we're struggling with, does our community want this? Because it doesn't appear as though they fully embraced it, but there was at least a majority support, however small it is, or a lot of communities asking for these kind of straw poll opinions?
I haven't seen any yet. This is the first one that I've worked on personally. There may be others out there. I think it's, it's a good idea, in the sense that the way that I think yours is written is to say, do you want us to go forward and start to draft regulations to, that would regulate these kind of uses? So, that way, you get a straw poll on that, and if that passes, well, then good, you'll have your ordinance committee and others start to work on that. If it doesn't, then the idea is, well, we're not going to, we're not going to take the time to do that, and maybe you'll have some other kind of question on the November ballot.
Yep.
So, I think it's, it was a good idea. I think it's helpful, particularly when it was a close community, because that is the thing I'm seeing. The trend is, it's sort of tied to the way the vote went last November, on how regulatory is going to happen. So, the communities that were clear noes were the first out of the gate to say, no. The ones that are closer are sort of doing what you're doing, and the ones that were sort of clear yeses are the ones who know they're going to allow it, and they're just talking about what kind of regulations they're going to want to put in place. So, it does seem to be tied with the way the popular vote went last, last year.
So, happy to open it up to any questions that anyone has.
Don't be shy. May I introduce yourself? This is on my...
My name is Joseph Burkabout, and on the planning board is Warren. And our approach right now, who and Warren, will have our town meeting in June. We are planning to, to introduce, have a vote to ban it, and if that fails, to have a vote for, to extend the moratorium for six months. We've got a moratorium. Does that sound like a sound approach? And I'll mention why we, why we put the moratorium is to give us time to come up with regulations. But does that sound like a sound approach?
And that, and that is the purpose of a moratorium. So, it, in fact, it's one of the reasons why you, it's one of the reasons to, you have to establish that before you can even adopt one, under state law, is to, is to give yourself time to work on reasonable regulations. So, yes, if you, if the community is going to start working on those kind of regulations and will use that time to develop regulations, a moratorium is completely appropriate. Now, a community could also do that without a moratorium, you could work on regulations today, right? You could work, or you can continue work on regulations, because the state is not going to have their regulations in place, and I'll let these gentlemen talk about the state process more, but clearly not until next year, the beginning of next year. So, there will be no state regulations, there will be no state license, until at a minimum of February of next year, and potentially longer.
Let me ask one more question. What does, what does a municipality have to gain? We don't get any of the tax money, correct?
You don't, there's, you get a portion of the total sales tax from the state, and you get half of the licensing fees applied to the state, and the municipality can also charge its own licensing fee.
And the licensing fee has not been set yet, the state licensing fee, okay.
I can, I can also tell you that there is a bill before our committee to discuss the potential of a local sales tax for marijuana, which is something that is done in Colorado. And I think one of the learning processes, I mean, our committee's going through a learning process, but fortunately, if you, if you're looking at this printout, you can see that there are a number of states who've done this before us. So, rather than learn the hard way, we've been asking a lot of questions about, how's this going in these other states, in terms of, you know, where the rubber hits the road? And what we've learned from Colorado, in particular, is that a local sales tax tends to engage local authorities in helping control the illicit marketplace. So, if your municipality is, say, realizing three percent of all the sales of marijuana, then you're much more likely to be aware of illicit marketplace, the illicit marketplace in, in your community. And so, there's, there's a give and take there.
And Legalized Maine would, is supportive of a local option sales tax?
Yeah, and Kent, is that local option sales tax specific to marijuana sales? Because I, I know that I've co-sponsored a bill that would provide a local option sales tax, but it's broader to, to all things.
Sure, so, yeah, there, there are two bills. There's one that's specific to marijuana, and then another that is more generic across the state of Maine for whatever municipality might want to do. You know, the feeling, the reality of, of dealing with the problems that marijuana introduces, actually, I shouldn't say introduce, the problems that marijuana creates for us today is that a good portion of those costs, whether they're law enforcement costs or just social costs, are already being borne, to a great degree, by the local municipalities. And so, I can't speak for the rest of the committee members, but in my mind, it makes sense to me that, that what, the way we should be structuring the, the revenue generation from marijuana should be making up for those social costs that everyone is currently shouldering today.
And one thing that I'll, before we just, I'll build on that briefly, I know that there are a handful of other bills that, not on the municipal end, but on the state end, wanted to allow that portions of the proceeds of sales go to addiction recovery efforts. Folks have, I think if you probably took all the bills, then they've spent three times over all the tax revenue from marijuana, but we'll be trying to figure out where some of the proceeds of the sales would have the most positive impact, and I think a lot of that conversation centers around addiction recovery in a broad sense.
So, I'm going to actually jump in here and ask a question. My name's Jeff Parker. I'm a select, a member of the Select Board in Rockport, along with Owen and three other fine gentlemen. We have here probably eight, at least eight different towns that are contiguous or somewhat contiguous. Is there any advantage, certainly from a marketing standpoint, if they all went pro, you know, if they, if they all instituted ordinances that allowed for, for sales and social clubs? But do any of you gentlemen see any advantages to an entire region having continuity with their, with their ordinances?
And before you answer that, one thing that was interesting, when, when, when we talked about this last time, what I remember was, wouldn't it make sense for one bordering municipality to have a robust cultivation-style ordinance, and then one for recreational sales? If you, if you think of Rockland, more folks come to Rockland, but cultivation wouldn't necessarily make sense there. Do any other states allow for kind of cooperation with contiguous or close municipalities?
My, my guess is, for the topic of social clubs and retail sales, that geography's going to play a role, because you'll get...
Natural dividing features, you mean?
Yeah. Well, you'll get underserved portions of the state, and you'll get over-competitive portions of the state as well. You'll get a lot of, of folks chasing... portions of the state as well. You'll get a lot of, of folks chasing after market space in some of the more, either densely populated places, or places where, where tourists frequent. So, so, for that particular niche, I would say, that particular segment of the, of the market space, I would say, there's a, a good plan, a coordinated plan is going to be helpful. When it comes to cultivation, I don't think that their geography will play as much of a role, because we have a highway system. And stuff's going to get moved around quite, I mean, it already is.
No. Are the people thinking about cultivation, almost entirely thinking indoor cultivation?
No, there's, and there's, it, right now, a lot of that's depending on what the testing standards for the state's going to be. So, one issue that happened in Colorado-
Pesticides perspective?
It's not even necessarily pesticides. It's just like, you know, heavy metals, like different contaminants, how much dust, you know, could be on a per sample. Because the issue that happened in Colorado was Colorado had very stringent testing standards with the idea that it would protect health and safety, while no one's ever died of consuming marijuana, that, when they had those testing standards come out, a lot of store shelves remained empty, because the cultivators could not meet the testing standards for the state. So then you had people continuing, continuing to go to the illicit market. And then you had, continued to have cannabis being diverted from those operations, after it was, had failed the test. So that's something, you know, to really consider, from the cultivation standpoint. But most people, right now, cultivate inside, and the people who are preparing, the people that I'm familiar with who are preparing for this, are looking at, at least initially, mostly for indoor cultivation, so they can have a product that will pass the, the state standard, in essence. You know, with the idea of regional continuity, too, is that, I think, what Representative Ackley hit on is totally correct, is that if, if there isn't continuity, like, let's say, for example, Rockland is the only municipality within kind of the mid-coast region to approve of social clubs, then wherever Rockland decides those social clubs are going to be, that real estate's going to go for a higher price. And so that's, that's going to help, you know, that's really going to drive the demand right there, for where these places are going to be located.
I think, as a citizen, Marsha Smolin, from Waldeboro, I think one of the concerns that I've heard from other people in our town is that they're confused. They don't know whether, why anyone would even approve this, okay? Is it going to be financially beneficial? Is it going to just do too much harm to the children? So there's a lot of questions out there, just saying, is it really going to be financially beneficial? Because socially, I think that you're going to have a lot of difficulties over, as this goes on with more and more people smoking marijuana, that there are going to be a lot of social issues that are going to occur, especially for the children, and have to, having to educate them in dealing with the difficulties that they're going to develop by, by actually, you know, getting involved with marijuana, because it affects the, the children's brains so drastically. So they're, they're kind of saying, okay, for, so we'll make a certain amount of money for, you know, doing this, but, retail, but is it worth the social impact that it's going to have on our children, long-term? And I think a lot of people are asking that kind of question. And is it worth that to our children, to do that to them? Or should we just say, we don't want it? But then they'll say, well, we're going to make so much money, so if Warren does it, or if, if Rockport does it, we're going to miss out on all that money. So I think there's a lot of confusion, and, and I think we're just all trying to figure that out, as to, you know, which way do we go with this, you know? Because we're, we're one of the, Waldeboro is one of the, one of the places that voted it out. They weren't interested in it. But now they're trying to decide, you know, like, you already had a vote in November, and, and you had people who said they didn't want it. Now they're saying, do we need to go back and ask that question again, or do we just prohibit it? Or do we have to go back in again and ask the people again? So, I think those are a lot of questions.
And so, I just want to, just throw one thing out there before you go. And please correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't think that I am. It is completely legal for personal consumption of adults, what we're debating as far as allowing within the towns or retail sales or not. So that's just one thing to, to clear up, right there. But, sure, go ahead.
So, Ms. Smolin, don't let the ponytail fool you. I don't have a horse in this race. I haven't used marijuana since my teenage years. And actually, my first, most recent experience with marijuana was, was when I was on the campaign trail last summer, knocking on doors, and actually discovering how common marijuana use is today. It blew my mind. And, and some of that is medical marijuana.
That may or may not be comforting.
Well, it, it, it is what it is. Some of it's medical marijuana, and there's a medical, certainly, no dispute, that there is a very reasonable medical use for this plant, when you have folks who are suffering from cancer, or seizures, or a host of other diseases, where this plant is very helpful. But the fact is, if you're going to allow folks to use marijuana for those medicinal purposes, you've just created a system that is easily gamed for recreational use. And, and so that's how it is, right now. So, I was at a Board of Selectmen meeting in, in Litchfield, Maine, just last week, and I described it as the Wild West, is what we've got. And the fact is, when it, when it comes to all the public safety issues, whether it's protecting kids, whether it's, you know, protecting people who are consuming marijuana from contamination, or whether it's protecting drivers, innocent drivers on the road, our current situation is as bad as it's going to get, because it is completely unregulated when it's being used in the illicit marketplace. And that illicit marketplace is huge. That said, I think there's an opportunity, not just because it's the right thing to do, but because we can begin to recoup some of the costs of the illicit marketplace, whether that's the, the, the costs that we all shoulder when someone is not successful in school, whether that's the, the, the costs of folks' healthcare when they're consuming a dangerous product, or whether that's the cost of a tragedy on someone, on, on, on one of our roadways, because someone is operating a vehicle under the influence, that we don't really have, we don't, we haven't yet trained our law enforcement people to recognize and prosecute in a reliable way. And so, I look at the tax dollars, not just as like, you know, a kid in a candy store. I think these tax dollars can actually be thoughtfully used to compensate communities for the costs they are already incurring. And, and, and the state as well, the state of Maine as well.
Could I, could I just, so, you know, to jump off what Representative Ackley said, you know, we're not, we're not creating a new market. The market's already there, the consumption's already there. I, I'm guessing that we're not going to see this huge spike in consumption. We might see a spike in consumption from people from away or tourists, but not necessarily a spike in domestic consumption. I think the advantage of being able to have, have it in a municipality, whether it's a retail store or a social club, is, and that gives the municipality a certain amount of control over what happens in that facility and around that facility. Because one of the things that's been happening out in Colorado is, even though Colorado doesn't have social clubs, licensed social clubs, people are still creating social clubs, where people congregate, they're selling cannabis, that's untaxed and unregulated, and they're consuming it in a social setting. There's party buses that will go around where they can sell cannabis. And it's, it's, again, it's, and that's, that's not licensed by the state, so the state can't set a standard, the municipality can't set a standard. So to, to deal with the issue, if, to, from a public safety standpoint, from a public health standpoint, it's better to have the, to control and regulate it, than to ignore it, I guess. I can't figure out a better term than that. But when we're looking at the data that's coming out of Washington and Colorado, Colorado, who's had its program for about two and a half years now, up and running, Washington, who has its program up and running for just under two years, we're not seeing a significant increase or decrease in the self-reported teenage use. And that's coming from public health surveys, and the public health data out of the, the health departments of both of those states. And so that's the data that I'm, I'm operating off of. And again, it's self-reporting, but we're not seeing, we're not seeing a spike like some people who oppose the legalization of cannabis feared. And that's something I think is, is a credit to the lessening of the stigma of cannabis use, as Representative Ackley spoke about on the campaign trail. I'm sure everyone in this room has a story about how the past six years, they probably discovered someone in their own life that uses cannabis, whether medicinally or recreationally. But that, the, the use really won't change. And the best thing we can do is really educate the youth about why they shouldn't be using cannabis until they're of the age of majority. And then that, by controlling it, you're going to incentivize these licensed, regulated, and taxed businesses to not let the cannabis get into anyone under 21's hands, because they'll be held accountable, not only through a administrative or criminal proceeding possibly, but also by people in our community.
I can jump in just for a quick second. I have a couple of tax questions, because I am, I am, have no particular frame of reference. The medical marijuana is legal for sale in the state right now?
Yes.
And it gets taxed at just five and a half percent sales tax?
Eight, eight percent for edibles or topicals.
Okay. And does one imagine that, that when general sales are allowable, where they're allowed, that there is a surcharge tax, much like an alcohol tax? Or will it just be regular sales tax?
So, so the statute that was passed by the voters in November called for a 10% sales tax, as well as licensing fees for people participating in the marketplace?
And if, just on the, on the 10% sales tax part, the motivation behind that is, again, as we said earlier, is that we're not creating a new market. We're trying to, you know, bait, we're relying on human nature to take the path of least resistance. And in my experience, anecdotally, is most people will be willing to pay that additional 10% on the cost of the cannabis, as opposed to, to go through illicit, completely legal, regulated market, than not, than going to an illicit market. From data and information that's come out of Washington, they set their tax, I believe, around 45%. And because that tax was so high, the illicit market was still thriving, because people were saying, well, jeez, why would I pay, you know, $75 for something I can pay 34, or 40, $40 for from the illicit market? And there's, and there wasn't the criminal enforcement or the civil enforcement at that stage.
And final question on the tax issues. Then would medical marijuana be jumped up to 10%? Or would that come in at a lower tax rate to support?
This is, this is, this is a really good question. And although the scope of our committee work is focused on adult-use marijuana, there's a realization among the committee members, that what we do in adult use, we shouldn't be doing in a vacuum, that these two markets interact with one another, and that we have to be careful to calibrate what we do in one place with something else.
And on that, on that same, in that same portion, again, why the tax was set at 10%? It's only four and a half percent higher than the current medical marijuana tax. So that would hopefully encourage people who were getting the medical marijuana certification as essentially cannabis insurance, so they don't get the civil fine, that they wouldn't continue to have that, that in essence, like false certificate, because they're adults and they're able to possess it and use it and purchase it.
So, right now, I know that, I read the law, the current law. I don't know how much of that is going to be changed. I don't know. But, you know, I was looking at the licensing, I think it's $2,500 per year for a license for like, a retail store. So if, say, you decided to put one retail store in, that's $2,500 per year. So, the town would get half of that?
Yes.
Under the current statute.
Right. Do you think they're going to be changing that significantly?
Hard to say. I'm just one of 17 folks who are looking at this.
So potentially, right now, it would be half of that, right? Per year?
Correct.
Right. And then the town itself could have its own license requirement?
That's right.
So, can they say, we want to charge you $10,000? Or does it have to be within that 2,500, which is consistent with the bill? So they could do their own $2,500 license?
Yeah. So, there will be some flexibility on how, the bill, the law doesn't talk about how much municipality can charge for that license. There are, there is flexibility, but it's not, it's not the moon.
Right.
There's, there's, there's some law around what municipalities can use license fees for. Essentially, you can't make it a local option sales tax, and, and get as much revenue as you want. So licenses, license fees can only be used to pay for the reasonable, sort of, regulatory functions around that business. I don't know what that number is yet. It could be some, something high. It could be at least $2,500. I don't know. But you have to have a justification for that number. This is just general law, not just the marijuana area. So, what's it going to cost for your code enforcement officers to retail, and your police departments? Is it going to have an increase on a police and code, and health, and safety, all those sorts of things that you may expect to have to absorb?
Right.
Then you can come up with that number. But I haven't seen that yet in any community, so we're going to sort of suss that out. But it won't be something, it can't be something extremely high, if it's not justifiable.
They could justify like, 2,500, like the state has justified?
Potentially. It's, it's silent.
You stayed within those limits to say, okay, there's a minimum and a maximum. But I think it's 2,500 for the retail. So, so the town itself could put in 2,500. So they would get half, plus the 2,500 for the year, right? So they have, what's that?
3,750.
3,750. And then they would have to decide whether or not that was going to be economically feasible for them to support all of the programs they're going to have to put in place, in order to, like you said, to already work on what's happening with the marijuana issue as it is, right? And then you said there's a sales tax, too, on top of this?
At this point, there's a suggestion of a sales tax.
Right.
So that's not part of actual law. There are bills in front of the Marijuana Legalization Implementation Committee that we have accepted, and have, and considered them within the purview of our committee work. So, we'll be working actually beyond the session. Looks like we'll be working through the summer.
Right. So that's 10% right now, for sales tax, of the law?
A state sales tax.
And then the municipality gets 10% of whatever there comes in?
No, the, so the, the sales tax, oh, there's only one program earmarked, that the sales tax money can be spent on, and that's training of law enforcement on how to enforce the new laws. And it's our belief that DREs could, drug recognition experts could definitely be flexed into that. And the concept behind that would be, if, if the town of Rockport wanted to train their law enforcement on the latest marijuana laws, and the latest, you know, marijuana training, that it would not cost the taxpayers of Rockport money to send those officers to the Maine Criminal Justice Academy to get that in service. That would come from a special fund that the sales tax is a part of, that the cannabis sales tax is a part of. But the rest of it goes to the general fund.
Do you mind if I ask a question? So you made me think, you said, we're going to be working through the summer, but the, the marijuana committee will only be able to vote bills out of committee. Does that mean, when we come back into our second session in January, that there's going to be an abundance of marijuana bills that the entire legislature will be voting on? I don't, I didn't know if your committee had talked about timelines and how-
Yeah, we have.
Because it's going to have to be approved by the entire body, the Senate and the governor.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, we can continue the legislative process throughout the summer. We would have, presumably, I, I'm thinking we'll have one more bill before the end of June's session. And then we'll work throughout the summer and have some other bills ready for when we reconvene in January.
Great. So, I, and I asked that question maybe by way of kind of having folks be aware when a lot of these kind of hard and fast decisions will be coming out. As much as Kent can speak to what the committee's thinking, I'm guessing January will start to be some really hard and fast things that will help the communities plan around.
And the other deadline to be aware of is this February 1 deadline for the end of the moratorium. And the February 1 deadline is actually the deadline, when the state says it will begin accepting applications for licensure. So, that's not actual licenses going out and people opening up shop. That's when the state begins taking applications from people who want to participate in this marketplace.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ken McKinley. I'm the vice chair of the Rockport Select Board. And just to, to give you an introduction of where I am, I voted no on the referendum. But I do realize that responsible adult use of cannabis is a train that's coming down the track, and I can't really stand in the way of it. But I do have a lot of questions. I also serve as the Select Board Liaison to the Ordinance Review Committee here in Rockport. So, if Rockport decides that they want to allow these and regulate them, I'll be one of the ones helping to, to do that. And one of my issues, and I'm going to be heavily relying on the rules that the state makes. And so one thing I want to ask, and we've already heard a little bit about this, is about the use for kids. The American Academy of Pediatrics stated very clearly that marijuana is detrimental to- The American Academy of Pediatrics stated very clearly that marijuana is detrimental to young people. The brain development isn't finished until really you're in your mid twenties or so. And so it has detrimental effects. The law says no use over under 21. But what I want to know is, is the state, is the committee looking at really some robust regulation on those of legal age procuring for those underage? Because that's how it's going to end up getting down into the schools. And quite honestly, there's an opportunity here, I would think, to do the same thing for alcohol. Because that's the way alcohol is procured right now. So that's one of the things that I'll be looking for in the committee's output. I'd like to see some pretty robust penalties for somebody who's 23, 24 years old going in and purchasing cannabis and then providing it to somebody who's 19. So I'll let you guys speak to that.
It's just trafficking. So the current, the current statute would be if, if I, if right now cannabis was legal to buy in a store and I bought some legal cannabis and the committee added no new statutory penalties or administrative penalties and I gave it to 19-year-old Representative Cassas, I would be guilty of trafficking in marijuana. That's, that's still furnishing, thank you, furnishing. That is, that's still on the books for the 17A Criminal Code.
What are the penalties?
That's, I believe that's a class C. I believe it's a class C felony.
To go further, I know that we have spent at least two hearing days on this topic. And we have looked at a variety of issues around this. Not just about, you know, adults distributing to minors in an illegal way, but also putting restrictions on retailers about how they do their marketing. We've looked at various types of packaging so that it's clear that the packaging is not either displayed or created in a way that would be attracted to a young person. And then we're also looking at packaging as a way of keeping those products safe so that resealable packages and things like this that can make sure that if it's like an edible, edible product, that it doesn't get mistaken if it's left out on the counter or something like that. So, yeah, Mr., Paul's given me this information from our, from our committee here. We're also looking at prohibiting locations. We've got some setbacks for retail locations. Currently, the statute is talking about 1,000 feet from, actually, I think the current statute is.
The current statute leaves it to municipalities.
Oh, does it? Well, I think the state is going to set, probably set a standard for setbacks. So retail and social club facilities couldn't be located within a certain number of feet of a school or playground or other places where kids might congregate. What that actual number is yet, has yet to be determined. So there's going to be quite a lot of, like alcohol, there's going to be a very detailed discussion about exactly how is this product marketed? And how can we make it not attractive to young people? And from the very beginning of our committee meetings, we actually adopted Colorado's sort of vision statement for what they, what they started their marijuana legalization activity on. And we added one thing to that vision statement because we felt strongly and we heard this concern. Was not, you know, this was not a slam dunk vote. This was a close vote. And so we have to pay attention to those who have concerns. And risk mitigation was one of the things that we added to the very first sentence of our, of our vision for how marijuana would become legal in Maine.
I have some other questions, but if anybody else wants to pop in, then feel free. But a question for Phil, I guess if you're feeling a little.
Yeah, sure.
On local licensing, what would the criteria be that local municipalities could impose on licensing? Will there be any limits on that? Will it, will it be different than the state? What, on what criteria will a municipality either accept or reject a license?
Well, that's a good question. And as I said, there's sort of two different sort of license questions for municipalities. One is the state license requires municipal approval. And it's, that's not defined any further than that. So I don't know if the committee's working on that or others are working on that. I assume you probably are. At this point, without anything else changing, it would come to the board of selectmen in your case and you would approve it or disapprove it. But you always should have some kind of standard in place. So I think we, I'm waiting also to see what the state provides in that area. So that's the first crack at it. And then the second is if a community decides to have a local license separate from the state license. And that, we have sort of a body of law to look at in terms of, because we have business licenses around the state or other types of operator, the old, the old vixular licenses, which are still available in some main communities. So it's something like that where obviously it's applied equally. You would have to meet some basic standards in terms of the way you run your business and that sort of. But we could borrow from some ordinances. This is all brand new. So we don't have any examples today, but we, probably some from my firm or MMA or someone else will come up with the first version of it, working together with our, with our clients.
I have a quick question. I know when a state agency liquor store applies for a license within a municipality, they're required to have a public hearing to get input from the general public versus just a board of select folks. Can anyone answer the question that that would also be standard practice for a state license?
There is a public hearing process required today in the law.
Okay.
I believe both of the state and the municipality, yeah. So it would, so the state would have a process where you could weigh in and just find this. And then, and then there's also a local, a local version of that. I think the statute says at this point, there's at least has to be notice. If there's no other kind of regulatory authority that the municipalities decide to take on, there's at least a notice in the community that the state has received that license and that they can comment on it.
My understanding is the folks that do the approval kind of wait those public hearings quite heavily in their decision making. Because if there's robust public outcry that they don't want this thing there, that discretion is given to the approving body to incorporate the things that they heard in the public hearing.
And the licensing process, at least from the state criteria, we're working on and hope to have in that bill that will come out before the end of June.
Great.
So it should be, that, that part of it should be known pretty quickly. It was at the top of our list.
And then one final question, and maybe you'll take it as a snarky comment, we'll see. Having to do with the sales taxes and the 10% sales tax. And it says that some of that will come back to the local municipalities. That sounds an awful lot like revenue sharing. We all know what happens to revenue sharing. So I'll just leave it at that. And if anybody wants to address that.
And that, you know, and hopefully the committee will take up, for, hopefully by the time the legislature meets next January, they'll have a local option sales tax bill that'll be ready to take up specifically for cannabis as a way to encourage that.
And the great thing about that, if that passes, which I would fully support, is it basically cuts the state out of it. So they wouldn't even be able to get their hands on it and then prohibit it. Getting down to you, that would immediately cycle to the municipality.
Hi. My name is Ted Skowronski. I'm public. And I guess my question is, and I'm trying to work it through my head and I, that's why I have to ask it and it might be a silly question, but why social clubs? And what is the purpose of them? How will they work? You mentioned something about licensing. And it sounds like there also will be basically a store. So can you expound on what a social club is supposed to be?
So the reason that we put social clubs in the initiative, which is now in law, is because there, in Washington and Colorado, which did not license social clubs, that they were already occurring. That people were congregating, using marijuana in a social, in a social setting and charging for it. But that hadn't neither municipal or state oversight of that. You know, as I said earlier, there are tour buses or party buses in the state of Colorado, which are essentially social clubs, but they're unlicensed by the state. So we wanted to live by the main state motto, "Dirigo," which is I lead. And really tried to lead with the fact of saying that because these things will occur naturally, because that's what humans will do, it's better that the state licenses them and regulates them as a way to have a handle on it to prevent any sort of, you know, risk or dangerous behavior associated with them. And also as a way to be able to collect an increased amount of revenue and provide better licensing fees for these municipalities. And hopefully avoid issues that we've seen in other states where then you have these unlicensed social clubs that will hop from location to location to location. And then you're having, you know, the municipality trying to chase them with, either through code enforcement or through law enforcement to try to shut them down.
And just, just for everyone's understanding of what a social club is, we already have social clubs today for alcohol. They're called bars. And that is essentially the idea. You go to a particular place, you consume the product there. It's not like you're buying it and taking it home. And, and I think the concept behind social clubs is that they would be performing the same purpose as a, as a bar does today.
Yeah. And I would just add, just from the regulatory process, that, that is the way that I look at it as a land use lawyer of a background and worked with alcohol licensing issues, is that it's sort of an on-premise versus off-premises type of idea. And under state law today for alcohol, there's on-premise licenses and off-premises licenses. Meaning you sell it for people to take it home or you eat it or consume it on the premises. That's the, that's the way I see this in terms of when I'm regulating, when I'm thinking how to regulate it. It's the difference between like a bar, restaurant type of use versus a retail store. That's the concept behind, I would think, I wasn't involved in the writing of this, but.
Yes.
Just a quick, yeah, quick question. I think the room is filled with a lot of, a lot of people who are sitting on boards and committees. And if you could just give us, from a legal perspective and other perspectives, you know, three or four things that they should take away and, and work on when they go back is things that we, they should be paying attention to and trying to get answers to those questions to as they work through the process. I think that would be helpful for, for everyone here in the room?
Sure. Well, I think the first decision that communities need to make is whether they want to allow these retail establishments or not. And that's a decision that ultimately is done by your legislative body, whether it's town meeting or town council, depending on what kind of town you live in. That is a vote that will need to have, assuming someone puts something like that forward, that would have to be voted on. If that kind of question is not put forward or fails, then the, the second step is, so how do we want to regulate it? It will be legal under state law. And you have a couple of options there. You can, you can put a cap. Do you want to sort of put a cap on, on that? Or do you want to treat it like any other land use you have in town and put it in your zoning ordinance? And regulate location and operation? Have some, have some performance standards around that use like you do other types of specialty uses already in your zoning ordinances? Those are the sort of the questions you need to sort of go through in your mind. And then in terms of, I don't know the answer yet on what the regulations are going to look like. I am also waiting for the state in terms of how I work with municipal clients because it's such a brand new area that we don't know. We're going to need some help essentially. We're going to have some help from the state and from the, whatever agency ends up being the regulatory authority to come up with some of those standards. Some, some communities, I think, will just be, go as far as just putting it in their zoning ordinance. They'll let the state sort of take over the operational or regulatory stuff. But they'll say, we only want it in this retail zone, for example, or something like that. But you can go further than that and you can have a local license requirement. So those are the, those are the steps you're going to have to go through as a community. And we just don't have all the answers yet in terms of what the regulations could or will look like. Any other specific questions about that, that you may be struggling with in your communities?
I had a, I had a question because it, it kind of applies to what you're, what you're talking about where we're waiting.
Yeah.
And the question is, we oftentimes as a legislature, task a state agency to come up with routine technical rules.
Right.
And so curiosity to me says, is the agency that we potentially have approved, are they going to be simultaneously, while the Marijuana Implementation Committee is working on statute, is that regulatory agency going to be working on routine technical rules? Or are they going to be waiting for the statutes to be approved and build rules around that, which would actually kind of elongate the process? Because I don't see them working well in tandem. These agencies need good statute to rely on to build rules. But that I see kind of making it to the point where Phil and company have really good understanding of what we're looking at here. It's going to make it even longer.
Well, I think you've, you've hit the nail on the head in terms of why we want to put the licensing process first and see if we can dispose of those issues right at the beginning.
So they can get the ball.
So they can get the ball rolling on that particular part of the statute and, and the rulemaking process.
Great.
And again, that'll be relying upon the executive branch instructing rulemaking. Currently, the executive branch is taking no action on rulemaking until the bill that we mentioned at the beginning of this meeting goes through and they're appropriated funding to hire their consultants and to hire their staff.
Dick Grabtree, Sleckman Town of Hope. Perhaps a quirky question. Is there any contemplation in the current statute or the laws that are being considered of a joint use facility? Could a social club serve food and alcohol? Just as a restaurant serves alcohol?
So currently in the statute, both retail stores and social clubs are prohibited from selling any sort of other food or drink. And they're very clearly prohibited from tobacco and alcohol products also.
And there's no consideration of changing that in the?
Well, I can tell you that I just got back from a drug driving conference in Bangor, put on by the folks at AAA last Friday. And the, the challenge with operating a vehicle under the influence of alcohol versus operating the, operating a vehicle under the influence of marijuana, it, it basically triples when it's both. And so I think the reason that it's written into statute is, and actually I think we're going to be looking at some labeling on packaging for marijuana that says, do not consume alcohol when you consume this product.
Now, I'm not advocating joint use. I just sort of wanted to make sure it wasn't allowed.
It, it, it's not a good idea and I think there's a reason why it's in statute that we don't, we don't mix the two.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had one question, and ma'am, I apologize, I'm horrible with names. One of the questions was not necessarily on the municipal end, what they may realize for tax revenue because that's still a little bit in flux. But maybe what has panned out for other states on the state end as far as revenue? Just so we have a general ballpark of what we're talking about here for supplemental funding or things that could be shifted into addiction recovery.
Well, Colorado has sold over a billion dollars in cannabis annually. And every month they're breaking records with the amount of cannabis they're selling. I can try to look up, see if I have, I thought I had something here related to that.
I think, my latest recollection was that Colorado, Colorado in their last fiscal year was reporting something on the order of $100 million of revenue that was being delivered by, by their regulation of marijuana. And it's also interesting to note that that conference I went to last Friday had a number of experts from Colorado. And they are not at all satisfied with their progress in terms of converting the illicit market into a regulated one. They've made a dent, but it is still there. And so there's plenty of room for them to, to make progress.
Yeah. So in 2016, Colorado sold $1.3 billion worth of cannabis.
And at a 10% rate, taxable rate of?
I think Colorado's charging more than 10, but at a 10%, that would be, that'd be $130 million.
Yeah. Colorado has a, like, it's just a 15%. They have about a 29% state sales tax, or state tax, and then a local option tax up to 3.5%.
Do you think that that maybe is one of the reasons why it's been difficult to make that bigger dent in the illicit market? Because the tax structure is so high?
So, so I'm an economist by training. And the challenge that we have here with two markets, actually, it's three markets. It's the medical market, it's the illicit market, and it's the adult use recreational market. They're all working together, sort of interplaying. The challenge that we have is that we've got unintended consequences when you push too hard. too hard. It's like pushing against a string. You don't make a whole lot of progress and instead it's better if you pull it along and give people reasons to do the thing that you want them to do. And so, uh, and, and also when you are sure that they're, they've developed a habit of doing those things that you want them to do, that it's then that you can tighten the screws. Right? Then you can start to say, "All right, well, now we're going to increase the standards for laboratory testing so that, um, so that consumers are more protected rather than just emptying the shelves off of, off of any retail establishment." So, uh, so there's, you know, it's going to be carrots and sticks. And, uh, there is a way to tax too much, uh, because you won't get the optimal situation. In fact, uh, one of the states, I think it was Oregon, had a huge oversupply of, uh, of retail-produced marijuana that suddenly disappeared. Like, no one knows what happened to it. We all know what happened to it. But it suddenly disappeared out of their retail system and the reason was because the prices were too high and the illicit market took it.
I'll just, I would just add anecdotally, I'm certainly not an expert in this and I'm completely neutral on the topic, but just driving up here on NPR, there was a story about it. I think it was on the Marketplace program and they were talking about a community out west, a farming community in one of the states that's legal, that was about to go bankrupt. And they were going to allow cultivation, fees on cultivation, cultivation tax, and so they decided to allow it in their community and they were expecting to bring in around 12 million dollars on, and their annual budget is 13 million for that community. That was just a story I heard on the way out.
Yeah.
I, I have no idea in any other states, but just anecdotally, that's just what I heard.
And that's, and that's, and that's one of the examples that I mentioned earlier about how with Colorado being two and a half years in, um, to having this established regulated market, that, that was a community that formerly, I believe formerly prohibited any sort of legal cannabis operations, who's then decided to come around and license it, um, as a way to bring in revenue to the municipal coffers.
Walter Wrights from South Thomaston. I, I may have misunderstood your question, Owen, but, uh, in the Opportunity Agenda handout that the Democratic leadership is shopping, um, they say that, that their funding, um, to support that will include 13 million dollars of marijuana revenue in the, that budget cycle, the two-year budget cycle.
And I think that, um, what I said earlier about, uh, folks having bills put in about the, the sales revenue and it being siphoned off to, um, pre-named places. And so if I had to guesstimate what went in was, what was going to be left over from, and I've, if I remember correctly...
Yeah.
Paul, remember when it was in my committee and I feel like I asked you and you said conservatively on the low end, we were looking at between 25 and 30 million dollars? You thought that was a low number of tax revenue, but something you felt relatively comfortable with?
Well, that, that'd be the idea of a fully established market by 2020, is that we're estimating, um, probably around having, you know, around 200 to 300 million dollars annually in sales. If we're going by the data that's come out of Colorado and Washington, a lot of those sales initially will be driven by the tourist market. As I'm sure some of you know, we have around 23 million tour, individual tourists who come here every year. And so if that's, I think, from just the back of the envelope figure, I think that was them only spending, I think, 30 dollars. It was about 15% of those people who come here spending 30 dollars each. That would help really boost that.
I have a quirky question.
Actually, but before you ask your quirky question, there's also some interesting data coming from the medical marijuana side of things that is sort of hidden in the data that not, not many folks are aware of, that the medical marijuana program is producing in excess in revenue and adding to the state's sales tax, uh, on the order of about, uh, 10 million dollars. It's about a couple million dollars in revenue for licensing and then another 8 million dollars in sales tax that's been generated.
For my quirky question?
Yeah.
Okay. I know this is for human consumption, okay? The, what we're working on. But is it also going to be part of, for retail, for making pet treats? For lacing pet treats with marijuana to help with pain and anxiety?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely see that, I definitely see that being part of the market. That's, that's happening in other legal states.
But is it being regulated? Is it part of this? Or can, or, or is it, or are they doing it right now and they're not, in the moratorium on it?
The marijuana legalization acts silent on providing cannabis for, for pets.
Right.
You know, again, it's, it'd be within, you know, I don't want to venture too far off the reservation here, but, you know, it'd be the, in the essence of giving your pet a herbal remedy, giving him some Yarrow, um, or some Comfrey, or possibly even a Sauv that you got at like Good Turn Co-op or something like that. You know, I, I do know that that is, that is a large part of the forecast of what the market will be, is that people providing, you know, holistic alternatives to, holistic alternatives for their furry friends and for their furry families.
So right now you could, I mean, I could start a store right now and I don't have to wait for legalization?
No, you wouldn't.
And then just sell pet treats?
You couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't legally sell any treat for human or animal consumption that has cannabis in it. Cause you, cause you're still selling cannabis.
You're not selling to the dog, you're selling to the human.
Right.
To the owner.
Right. So that would be, that would be considered illegal right now?
It's currently illegal right now and, uh, to participate in the medical marijuana, uh, program, uh, you need to have, uh, a doctor's okay to be a patient and you need to have a license to be a caregiver. Or, or a license to be a dispensary.
So if you have a, currently you have a facility right now, a retail, uh, a medical marijuana, uh, person who has a, has a business right in town right now?
Yeah.
Who sells pet treats that are laced with marijuana, that would be illegal?
So, so under the medical marijuana statute, the, the mari-, any sort of medical marijuana is only supposed to be for that patient. So again, I'm, I, I don't know if we'll see any sort of necessarily enforcement on that, or if there's necessarily, you know, the, the will from law enforcement to, to say you can't, you, you can't use your cannabis to give it to, to your pet. But, you know, right now as every adult's allowed to cultivate their own, you know, we're, we're, we're seeing people who are using part of their first harvest to, um, process it into treats for their pets or actually feeding them even the raw flower form.
But they're not selling it in a store?
Correct.
That would not be currently legal.
Right.
So if I have a wonderful glass place that sells bongs to other people besides my medical marijuana patients, my five medical marijuana patients, that would be illegal as well?
Bongs, I believe, are sold for tobacco use only. That's how they're showcased anyway.
Okay.
So I, I think where you're headed is, do, do we have a tremendous gray market working right now?
Yeah.
Absolutely. There is no question that we do.
But is it gray? I mean, it's right there. I mean, it's not...
Sure. But it's operating on the fringe and it's operating by, you know, nuanced terminology and, uh, and, and a lot of games being played.
Exactly. And that's what I'm seeing.
Absolutely. There is no question. And so the, so in my mind, when I look at a problem like that, I'm thinking, okay, not an easy way for us to constitutionally chase that away.
Right.
Uh, in fact, we've been doing that for the last 75 years and it doesn't seem to be working. What's the next best solution? And in, in my mind, I'm thinking having a, uh, firm but fair regulatory structure for adult use that says, "Okay, you know what? This is going to happen. Let's just make sure that we make the best of this situation." And have it happen in, you know, with some adult supervision.
A question from an online viewer we have with all this technology we have here. We have about seven or eight people watching online. And one of the questions is, you know, when this is all settled and all the dust is settled, in your vision of what the, what is your vision of what the future will look like in Maine and in the local communities once we get over this kind of hump that we're on right now? I hope I framed that question the way he wanted. So what's your, what's, how do you see the landscape looking five years from now after we've gone through all of this stuff?
Well, it's very difficult to forecast with the current attorney general of whether we're going to see increased enforcement of federal marijuana laws. Yes, the federal attorney general, Jeff Sessions, not our attorney general Janet Mills. There, so there's, it's so tough to forecast because there's, you know, there's no guarantees. It's not, not, not as reliable. Legalized Maine's vision would be that there would be tax and regulated cannabis establishments, local cultivations, local processing, all owned by Mainers, um, spread throughout the state. And again, that's why we put the strong local control into our initiative is to, is to make sure that each municipality will decide what is best for its citizens.
And I'll, and I'll take a crack, uh, and then I would love to hear Kent's response to this, having dove into it more. One of the things that was discussed a lot during the campaigns prior to the vote was, um, language around who this was written for. And there seemed to be widespread agreement that this bill for legalized recreational marijuana was not, it was not desirable to write that bill for, say, the Budweiser of the, the marijuana industry. It was written to try to be good for the mom and pop, your craft breweries. And that to me laid out a vision that marijuana would be integrated into the state in a way that matched our culture and, um, that was small, local producers, not mass-produced stuff by large pharmaceutical industries that can come in. And our regulatory structure was so onerous that only the folks that come in with resources can meet the regulations, which means a small group of folks can get the licenses and start cultivating this. That was the field that, that I had gotten. Um, and I would, I would just love to hear, that, that was, that was a big thing. This was written to hopefully, um, be a good amendment to what we're already doing here in the state of Maine versus opening the door for large corporate interests to come in and set up huge warehouses for cultivation on a large, large scale.
So I would, I would answer that question, uh, in sort of, you know, a 10,000-foot view scope by saying that years from now, once the dust is settled, uh, on the use of marijuana, I would hope that we would see responsible adult use. I would hope that we would see cost-effective, uh, a, a cost-effective law enforcement and incarceration system. And I would also hope that we see public health policy that focuses on the causes of all addictions, not just marijuana, not just opioids, but alcohol and tobacco as well. And that that becomes sort of the, the arguments that we can have in the public policy forum is, how can we get to the real issues that we're talking about when we talk about, you know, gateway drugs? When we talk about, uh, you know, what is the cause of crime in our society? And I, you know, I, I look at, at some of the root causes as addiction in general.
And I'm not a, I'm, I'm not going to speak from the policy side, I'll let those guys do it, but from a municipal attorney's side, what I see the future is, is each community have made the decision for themselves, have it implemented before the law goes into place so that there are clear expectations for members of the public and potential retailers. Because the problems that I see, whether it's this field or any other field, is when your, a community is reactive to the first application that comes to the door. And then they realize, "Oh man, we didn't have the regulation in place and maybe it's allowed today, we don't want it to be allowed." Or maybe it's okay to be allowed, but we didn't want it in that part of town. And that becomes a lot more of a difficult problem. It puts honestly the person who's applying in a difficult, difficult place because they are operating under a certain set of rules that they thought were in place. It puts the community in a, in a, in a difficult place and there's potential for litigation and other issues. So what I would, what I would hope over the next years, um, or less than a year now, is for communities to start to have that conversation internally and, um, and make decisions on how you want to regulate it or not and start to implement that by the beginning of next year.
Dick Grabtree in Town of Hope. A policy question and a legal question. I don't know much about marijuana, so I'm not even sure I know how to ask this question. But if I buy a loaf of bread, it's federal and state law that there has to be a listing of ingredients. In your packaging policy considerations, are you considering the advertising, the level of the effective drug? As I understand it, there's a lot of genetic testing going on and this is getting to be a much more powerful plant than it used to be 20 years ago.
It is.
And so I assume that you'll be able to buy X for 50 dollars and Y for 10 dollars. And so will the packaging include the sort of active ingredient?
Absolutely. Um, and, and we spent a day of testimony talking about exactly this. Because when people, uh, get themselves into trouble by consuming too much, it's because they, they are thinking that this is, you know, weed from the 1960s. Or it's the first time they have ever tried an edible form of this product. And so, uh, which is slower acting, by the way, than when you're inhaling it, when you're, when you're smoking it. The, the least prob-, the, the least of our concerns is actually, uh, the potency of what it is that you smoke because it's so, it instantly goes into your bloodstream and you naturally titrate the dose. So because it's such a, 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 a strong effect, the THC, um, you actually slow down your consumption of it based on how you're feeling in that instance. The big issue is when people are trying new products or they're trying, uh, products that have a longer dosing rate. And that's when you get into edible products and things like this. And those edible products, uh, if we're, if we're going to enact some of the packaging requirements that the committee is considering, those edible products will have a serving size, um, they'll have a potency rating, and they'll have a very detailed list of instructions on how to consume the product in a safe way.
Now the legal question. As I understand it, recreational marijuana is illegal at the federal level. And let's assume for a moment that it stays illegal at the federal level. And let's assume for another moment that the Internal Revenue Service enforces the law. So I don't see, A, I'm not sure how I see how this industry gets going because it's going to have to be a total cash business because no bank that is federally regulated is going to be allowed to do business with a retail marijuana, uh, establishment. So I'm not sure where they're going to get their cash. So that's probably going to force it into a cash business. If it's a cash business and it's illegal to file taxes saying that you derived your income from something that's illegal by federal law, how do you expect to collect your taxes?
Well, that's a good question and I don't know the answer to it. I can, I can tell you that, um, there are, there are financial institutions that are being set up now that are, there are people who are being very creative on how they set these institutions up to somehow work around the federal regulatory structure. And, um, and I'm just aware of that through the literature and the legal, legal publications I read. And so there are some, some of that happening. I think there's, uh, there's an institution in Colorado that's starting to happen. And so I think it's, and you'll probably know more about this, Paul, than I do, but I know that there is some developments in that area, um, in terms of the, the financial side of it.
That sort of answers how the business gets going. That doesn't answer how you collect your taxes.
So you're able to collect your taxes through the ability of inventory tracking and then state requirements, um, state tracking of what you're being, what has been produced and what's been sold. Commonly that's, you know, it's, it's inventory tracking, but kind of the buzzword for the industry is seed to sale tracking software because that goes directly from when the planet, when the plant is planted or cloned to where it matures, it is harvested, and how much that harvest produce, and then how much is sold out of that harvest. And so that's the, um, you know, that's the way that, um, all the other legal states have successfully been able to track the amount that has been sold and therefore collect the taxes from that.
That answers the sales tax question, but not the income tax.
So the income tax is that the, the, the federal government does not care how you make your money. They just want you to say how much you made and want their share. So currently there is the 280e tax structure. With marijuana being illegal, you know, we have 28 states in the District Columbia that have legal marijuana in one form or the other, either adult use or medical, that the federal government allows you to take tax deductions on the production of marijuana, but not the distribution of it. So if you are cultivating marijuana, you can deduct the cost of your soil, of your labor to trim it, of your electricity bill, of your lease of the property. Those were, those were all deductions. bill, of your lease of the property, those are, those are all deductions you can take that are legal with the current Internal Revenue Service and Maine State Revenue Service, but when it comes down to distributing it, to the actual selling of it, you run into what is called the 280e tax category, which prevents you from deducting the cost of goods, the cost of labor, mileage, utilities on a retail storefront, from the distribution of it, so, the federal government's already collecting millions of dollars in tax revenue from established cannabis businesses, and thus far, those who are tax compliant are not seeing negative repercussions from the Federal Revenue Service.
There are, on the other hand, some practical aspects of it, there was a NPR story on a grower, and obviously, a retail sell, sales operation in Alaska, and they had a whole chunk of money, and it came time for the end of the month to, to give it to the state government, and the state government, in their wisdom, had, had, created a P.O. box in Anchorage, but this guy was way the heck out of there, I used to live up north of the circle, so I know what this, so, he went to mail his necessarily cash to the P.O. box, and he got a call an hour later from the postmaster, said, "We know what this is, and we can't, we can't allow you to take drug money and send it through the United States Postal Office," so he had to get into a 185, and, and, you know, spend three hours in the air to go down and deliver his monthly tax revenue.
So, there's, there's certainly a lot of distortion, both in the tax code and in the financial system, it, it does sound like there are some financial institutions that are starting to see this as a business opportunity, and are starting to work with the cannabis industry, so that they get a little more conventional in their business techniques, but it's, it's, there's no doubt that anytime you're talking about converting an illicit marketplace into a regulated marketplace, that you're gonna have some hurdles and some challenges.
And, real quick, before you go, and we're gonna have to wrap up relatively shortly, some of our guests do have decent travel, I put in a bill to start a state bank, one of the reasons being they would not be FDIC insured, and we can accept marijuana money, though that bill completely tanked, it did give me an opportunity to interface with a lot of bank CEOs, and I can tell you that they are overly frustrated for a couple of reasons, one, they're missing out on this market, two, there are gray areas where there is a storefront, and they, they get revenues in from the person who owns the entire strip mall, one of the 15 stores being a marijuana dispensary, and that's even a weird gray area for them, and the people that they would need to go to to ask to, to change the law are the same people that regulate them, and so, there's not really any incentivizing of the bankers to go and say, hey, we, we want this done, then you kind of flag yourself as a person who's already stepped into the gray area, and they're a little fearful that the FDIC folks may come in and start checking their books a lot more meticulously, so, from what I've gathered anywhere from talking with a handful of bank CEOs, they would love to be able to accept this money, and then be able to loan against it, and be that multiplier effect for the economy that banks typically are, but they're just, they're not allowed to because of the federal.
And just, and just to be clear, the, the Treasury Department did issue a memo back in 2015 that does allow these banks and credit unions that are federally insured to accept state-legal cannabis business money, state-legal cannabis money, period, but there's a certain amount of checks and balances and stringent requirements for, for auditing purposes that they must do, and most of these financial institutions do not wanna just go through that back office trouble to deal with cannabis accounts, but currently, there's one bank in the state that has a pilot program, they're not accepting any new accounts, but they have marijuana, marijuana accounts, there are two credit unions that have marijuana accounts, one that has a moratorium on them currently, and one that is still accepting new marijuana accounts.
So, we're gonna take one more question, and it's gonna be Marsha, unless somebody jumps in, but I would like to thank all you gentlemen for, for your time and your expertise in this, and also, Rockport is, as always, very pleased to utilize their space and their technology to, to bring meetings like this to the greater community, so thank you all for coming, and Marsha.
This question, I hope, can maybe ease my mind, as well as some other people's, that, that it's not written in concrete, that if Walderboro said, decides to not do this when it comes out, then they can do it in a year from now, these licenses are for a year, right?
Yeah, the license, the state licenses are annual.
Right, so, would the town's licenses be annual as well?
Most likely, yeah.
Most likely, so that if they decided that it wasn't working, say, they approved it, and, and they decided that this is really not working for us, could they then say, we're not going to allow the license because we just don't like how it worked for us?
You know, I think so, that's one of the, in the regulatory world, that's one of the, the things that are sort of, the license, that's one of the benefits of a licensing program, because if you just have zoning, then there are certain grandfathering that can come into place, if someone's already established a use that becomes non-conforming, as you know, we have those already in our zoning ordinances, those businesses can usually continue until they stop, or, but with licenses, those are annual, they're not, they're not treated like a zoning ordinance, and so, if a prerequisite to operating community is having a license, and you decide not to do it in the future, then you just don't issue licenses anymore.
And we do that on the municipal end with alcohol, I mean, annually, we get a vitriol's license, victual's, we check in with the, we check in with our police department, we get recommendations from our, our public safety folks, and we have the ability to reject that license if we chose to. If, maybe if we didn't have a good reason, but I think if we had a good reason, we would obviously reach out to, to Phil and his folks and say, we felt we were perfectly, I mean, there were multiple fights, there were multiple violations, and they never responded to them, there were multiple this, there were multiple that, they were cited by the police, and the police officer, you know, the police chief does not recommend this, and we don't feel comfortable with it, and I think we'd have pretty good legal standing for rejecting that, I'm gonna take just this last opportunity to let the folks go and say any sort of parting words that they may have, and my parting words would be, if you go to legislatureMaine.gov, there are tabs where you can click our joint standing committees, the Marijuana Implementation Committee is on there, that's a decent portal to see what the committee's working on, you can search bills, you can search by kind of text there, so, if you wanna get more into the legalese that Kent and his committee will be looking at, the legislatureMaine.gov is a great place to start, and Paul, you have any parting words?
Just, I wanna thank everyone for their really insightful questions, you know, definitely made me think about some things, and I look forward to, to working with, you know, any of these municipalities around here, I live in Knox, and I grew up in Belfast, so I, I hope that this is something that will get off the ground rolling, and I hope communities be welcoming of these new businesses in their municipalities.
I'd like to invite you to come to Augusta, every Tuesday afternoon and Friday morning, the Marijuana Legalization Implementation Committee has, has an opportunity for public hearing and participation, and that's where we get many of our, our best ideas on the way things should be.
And again, I just wanna thank you for having me here, and, and my, just one piece of advice is to go back to your communities and start to think about how you wanna regulate these before, before the beginning of next year.
And geez, I don't know if you'll have time to get it on the June ballot, I think that ship has sailed, but we're, I think, we're pretty happy that we've put this kind of straw poll on there to get a better sense of where we think our community's at for retail sales, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you very much, everyone.